East Hampton Town Board, we are live.
Thank you, LTV. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Work Session of Wednesday, November 12, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Councilmember Flight.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Calder P. Mon.
Present.
Supervisor for our hours.
Present. If we could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So today, we open our meeting with public portion. We ask you to please kindly keep your comments to three minutes. Then that will be followed by four work session topics. We've got a Capitol Plan update with James Pincott, the John Osborne Homestead Draft Management Plan that'll be presented by Scott Wilson. Scott will also be presenting an update to the Wayne Scott Green Management Plan. And lastly, our Senior Assistant Town Attorney Charlie Collins will be going through some GFA Code discrepancies he wanted to bring to our attention. That'll be followed by liaison reports, and then we have a handful of resolutions. So first, we have the public portion, and Jane Mearing, you're the first one signed up. Welcome, Jane.
Good morning. Hope people know there are a lot of phones here, but... It's okay, you can leave, just... All right. Good morning, Town Board. My name is Jane Mearing, resident of Amagansett. I am commenting today solely as an individual resident of Amagansett, not a member of any town-appointed board, and I'm also commenting in my role as a board member of the Wayne Scott Heritage Project. A draft of a proposed management plan for the CPF acquisition of 66 Wayne Scott Main Street, put forth by the Town's Property Management Committee, is having its first work session review outing at today's meeting. The focus for the public today is, of course, to hear Mr. Wilson present the doc and to hear the questions, input, and discussion of you five board members. So I, we are not going to get ahead of that, but just do want to provide just a couple preliminary thoughts. As you recall from the public hearing held nearly a year ago on November 21, 2024, regarding the $56 million purchase, Wayne Scott Heritage Project was overwhelmingly supportive and so thankful for this acquisition. As part of our role in protecting the history of Wayne Scott and the value and integrity of historic structures and historically critical scenic view sheds, WHP did attend three of the Public Property Management Committee meetings over the past six months as they were working through and evolving the versions of the draft. And Councilman Calder P. Mon has been very thoughtful with us in soliciting and listening to our particular views and some concerns. As part of those discussions, we did offer some material input about several key aspects of the plan, including public access, parking, the concept of the walking path, issues regarding protecting the historic and structural integrity of the structures, protecting the vistas, and issues related to potential issues related to active agricultural use of the property site. Of course, we didn't want to overwhelm the committee or hijack their responsibility and jurisdiction over shaping the proposed management plan to be submitted to the board, and we don't want to get ahead of your conversation today. But we do have a brief written document that sums up all the thoughts and comments we did share during that drafting process, and we'll submit it to the board just so you have it this afternoon and hope you will consider some of that input in your deliberation of the plan as you move forward. But one closing thought for now. As you'll recall, Wayne Scott Heritage Project asserts that it remains absolutely essential that a full local historic designation be established by this board over the entire parcel of 66 Wayne Scott Main Street, just as you've done on the Dodge property, on the Fisher House CPF properties over recent years. We raised this strongly during the last year's public hearing process, and I think on March 6, 2025 work session. I believe the board did agree it would come back to this, to reconsider. And now, with the management plan moving forward into this part of the process, it seems to be a crucial time for this. We do continue to hope the designation could move forward so that it can be treated as a critical element in the management plan as it moves forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Jason, is there anyone on the line for public comment?
Yes, we have two callers on the line. Oh, wait, give me a second. Three callers on the line, and I will unmute them now.
Thank you.
Hello, caller ending 0467. You're on the air. Can you hear me?
Yeah, this is Rich Silver. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear. Go for it.
Yeah, hi, it's Rich Silver, full-time resident of Montauk. This morning, I'm speaking on behalf of the Town Sustainability Committee, of which I'm a member, and on behalf of concerned citizens of Montauk, of which I'm a board member and environmental committee chair. Focus of my comments is on the pending affordable multiple residency use legislation. Both the Sustainability Committee and CCOM submitted written comments as part of the public hearing on September 18. At the October 7 Town Board Work Session that followed the public hearing, Eric Schantz made a presentation with responses to input from the public hearing, followed by a discussion with the Town Board. Throughout, there was no reference made to the key points raised in the letters of the Sustainability Committee or CCOM, much of which focused on the sustainability requirements of the proposed legislation. Needless to say, this came as a surprise, and we hope that the comments were, in fact, reviewed and taken into consideration by the Planning Department and Town Board members. As a reminder, and as mentioned in the submitted public comments of the Sustainability Committee and CCOM, the Town's unanimously approved climate emergency declaration and the renewable energy roadmap direct the climate impacts be considered in every decision made by the Town. This, of course, means commitments to reductions of town-wide greenhouse gas emissions through supporting projects and legislation that advance renewable energy as well as demand reduction and energy resilience. We hope that the Town Board strongly keeps these commitments front of mind in future legislative decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Jason, if you could put the next caller through?
Absolutely. And hello, caller ending 0429. You're on the air.
Hi, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. My name is Amanda Fairbanks, and I am a local journalist and an author. I wrote The Lost Ways of Montauk, and right now, I'm working on a book about Gardner's Island, which I've been doing for quite some time. And my question specifically pertains to a 20-year conservation easement. This was signed in June of 2005 by Alexandra Creel-Golay after Robert Gardner passed away, and she became sole conservationist. I've spoken to a number of local environmentalists, specifically the Nature Conservancy. The easement and the continued conservation of that castle is obviously of the utmost importance, not just for Suffolk County, but for New York State. I'm a little bit curious that the easement was divided into this 20-year-long chunk rather than in perpetuity, as conservation agreements often are. And I just sort of keep getting batted around, mostly, I think, because of the length of this duration. I've reached out to Andrew Gates. I've reached out to Scott Wilson. I've reached out a couple of times to Supervisor Kathy Burke Gonzalez. My apologies for my many emails. I'm really just trying to get to the bottom of the 20-year easement and why it was that that was not renewed. Essentially, in June of 2025, that would have expired. And I was just curious whether the Town Board had had any interaction with the current eras of the island and anything that I should know in terms of going forward or alternate channels to pursue in terms of getting answers as to why that has expired. I'm just curious how the Town is thinking about that.
So Amanda, this is public comment. We don't enter into dialogue here. So, you know, you can reach out to the Town Attorney's Office or my office, but we appreciate your comments.
Okay, so just continue. So send you another email essentially. I just don't want to bother you unnecessarily.
That's fine. That's what I'm here for.
But reach out to the county attorney. Okay, got it. So reach out to the county attorney and you as well. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amanda. Jason, if you could put the next caller through, please?
Done. Caller ending 0299. You're on the air.
Yes, good morning, Supervisor Burke Gonzalez, members of the Town Board. This is Carolyn Logan-Glock calling. And I'm a Wayne Scott resident, member of the Wayne Scott Heritage Project Board, and I wanted to thank the supervisor for putting the draft property management plan for the Osborne Homestead on the agenda today, as well as Scott Wilson, in particular Ian Calder-Piedmont, and the members of the Property Management Committee for having welcomed input from the Wayne Scott community and listened so well. I think the draft is an excellent first step, and I look forward to hearing Scott's presentation shortly, as well as the Town Board's initial responses. I also hope the Town Board will take into consideration recommendations of the Wayne Scott Heritage Project, which are being made available to you today, and I look forward to seeing how the property management plan takes shape. It's a wonderful, wonderful property. Everybody already is enjoying it so, so much and so happy that it's now part of the public domain. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Jason, is anyone else called in?
We have no new callers on the line.
Okay, so we're going to move over to topics. We're going to start with the Capitol Plan update with James Pincott. Welcome, James. And Patrick, if you could please pull the presentation up.
Good morning, Supervisor. Good morning, Councilmembers.
Good morning.
Welcome, James.
So this morning, I'm going to present a brief update on current capital projects. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
So some current capital projects that we have in progress right now, or at least up and coming very shortly, is the Montauk Playhouse Aquatic and Multipurpose Cultural Center, which has been ongoing, highway department roof replacement, sanitation's construction and demolition debris lean-to, the sanitation drainage, Westlake dock repair, Town Hall Plaza leaks, Parsons Blacksmith Shop siding replacement, and the Land Building Egress Stairs, which is actually complete, but I still wanted to discuss it. So this project has been going on for quite a while. It's looking very good. The biggest report that I have or update is that we've had some HVAC issues that are being worked out, and as of yesterday, a lot of that has been worked out. There's still a few more things that have to be taken care of, but I'm glad to hear that report from yesterday. So, and this is mostly balancing issues of air and chill water. So also, the pool heating system had a little, a couple of fine tuning that had to be done, and they seem to have gotten all that under control and taken care of as of yesterday. So that's good news. Another big point in this one is that the epoxy pool deck that was inspected by the Suffolk County Department of Health, and they okayed it, and they're good to move forward with that. It's an image of the lap pool, image of the leisure pool. Because as of my last report, my last update, there was no water in these pools.
Wow.
So now you get to see the water in it.
So yesterday was the flag raising for Veterans Day at the Montauk Playhouse, and they had their coffee and donuts and cider in the lobby outside the cultural center. So we had more community members, some who hadn't seen the finished product, and there was a lot of enthusiasm.
I love that look of the surprise of the finished product. It's the best.
The health department, the health department is very particular to the grip ratio of the surfacing and also the pitch ratio of the surfacing to make sure it was draining off. And with such a large area like that, then to, the surface had to be redone twice now on there to get to that. So there's a long process and steps to that to make sure. That was the major ones. Other ones were about signage, but the health department is now certifying the pool, and we were waiting to permitting on there then too, so the pool vendor can be in there shortly.
Yes. It was a very difficult task for the contracts to keep that ADA compliance with a quarter inch or less per foot and have that water drain off at the same time. So it was a difficult process. For the highway roof, which is actually starting on the 17th, the contract was ordered demi-construction. I spoke about this last time briefly, but just to recap what they're going to be doing, they're not replacing the roof. They're going to be basically covering it with insulation and a membrane. So they're basically going to be putting a roof over a roof in a way. It's going to be weatherproof just as good as anything else. So they can do this with the people working inside the building. They don't have to relocate or anything. So, but this one has been coming for a little while, and now we're going to see it start on the 17th. This was, you know, part of the plans. Again, I just wanted to recap it so you can see what they're going to be doing.
And James, with that one, that's also designed to potentially be a targeted roof for solar panels. Is that correct?
That's what I've heard, yes.
Great. So knowing the square footage on there, that could be a very highly targeted location for the next steps for energy efficiency.
Especially since there's no trees or anything around it. It's just wide open. So that would be a good spot. But we're also replacing the sanitation, construction debris lean-to. Obviously, this is, the construction debris has to be covered with a structure that can keep water from getting in there and then rain shed, you know, falling off. A big addition to this project is that they're going to be also putting a loading ramp, like a transfer. So right now, it's very inefficient how they have to transfer materials in and out of there. Once they have that loading ramp, they're going to be able to get right up to each portion very easily. It's going to greatly improve the efficiency of how they do business there.
There's also a concrete pad going in the front, correct, just to kind of facilitate operations as well?
Yes, I think that's all tied into the loading ramp system, so, yes.
Yeah, and Tom's been working on this project here and working with Craig Fick. I know operational, it really, it just doesn't make sense about removing material two, three times before it came off the site.
Exactly.
And also, as Tom has mentioned many a times in his report, the cost of removing C and D off of Long Island is only going to be increasing with Brookhaven decreasing. So with Brookhaven, sorry, closing, they're taking a C and D at their facilities up there. But the more efficient we can be out here with our staff hours, mean better for the tax dollars.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're seeing, I mean, annual increases of about 15% per ton in costs. So, I mean, to that point, we want to make this as tight as an operation as possible to increase our taxpayer burden, sorry, decrease our tax burden.
I was there actually just the other day. I was interested about the concrete you mentioned. The concrete there right now that's coming out used to be about 24 inches, and now it's down to about 16. So that's how much wear and tear comes on the concrete. So the concrete going in there is going to be nearly 30 inches, you know, to be prepared, and that's part of capital projects to make it prepared for 30 years out then too. So that also adds expense, but it also adds length of time. So the evaluation, amortization of the debt service is high there. So the design is, I think, appropriate too. So well done, Tom.
Absolutely. I have some images here too. Again, that was the drawing for the plans, but next one, please. So this was the state of the initial, of the existing building. Well, it's no longer there, but that was the state of it. This is after demolition. And working around that foundation.
You see the slab there? That's some concrete.
Oh, yeah. I don't know. That's...
Also, for sanitation.
Excited too.
Excited about concrete. Additionally, at the sanitation site, we're also replacing the drainage, upgrading it, to be more precise. So we have a replacement of old drain pipe that's being conducted right now. Well, actually, a lot of it's already been done. They're doing some site work to make everything in front of the building there drain more evenly. As it was, it was basically pulling all the rain from the entire area and bringing it into one giant puddle, which is causing problems. They're going to, they already have actually installed several new drain structures, I believe about seven, and they tied it all into the existing system. So that place should drain very well now, or when they're finished. As you can see on the drawing there, so these, Dr. Currie ones, well, they're not all additional work. Set in a rules for additional ones. So... So that is actually existing drainage structures with some new pipe extended into it. So new in.
I'm grateful this one's going forward. I mean, I know it's been a big concern for a lot of users, just the general condition of the sanitation department overall. And, you know, I know the lean-to cost was about 1.8 million, I want to say. This is also an expensive project. I mean, capital projects are now very expensive, but, you know, as we can, we're addressing these in order, which we can. I think these two are the first two on the list. You know, we then have the loading area for the general household waste that I would like to kind of bring forward at some point in the next year or so. But yeah, it's an ongoing process to get that facility up to where I think residents would like it to be. But I think, you know, we also have to be cognizant that it is a refuse center, recycling and waste, and it takes a beating. It's heavy machinery operating there, so it's not going to be this perfect-looking space.
Yes, and the scale too.
Yeah, the scale as well. A bit on the scale also.
In our energy sustainability meeting yesterday, folks were commenting on folks not following the recycling rules and actually contaminating things like cardboard, which we make money for our taxpayers on. So they'd like to do an outreach on revitalizing the idea of where you put the stuff in the categories there and how it can, you know, putting things where they don't belong can contaminate the whole container.
Yeah. Generally speaking, the feedback we have from Steve Lynch and our recycling partners, someone who goes out to bid, is that the quality of the recycling materials they get from East Hampton specifically are some of the highest they see on Long Island, which is one of the reasons we've had such great income from those different streams.
Yeah, and I think that goes to the residents and through many administrations here that we're a sole source separator here, meaning the resident goes in and separates it then too. And that provides, you know, higher quality recyclables to get more cost on it, which again, is, defers the cost of running a facility of this size and magnitude, which is probably one of the only ones on Long Island municipalities.
Yeah. I think one of the biggest challenges we've got here in the near term and longer term future is getting new employees into this department. We have a lot of retirements coming up, and, you know, we have had open positions that have been open for a long time, and filling those is absolutely critical to our operations there in terms of, you know, the quality of the recycling, have the people go in and check and educate the public, but just also in terms of operating all our different aspects of that department. So something to keep an eye on.
So, sorry, ladies first.
No, I was just going to say, you know, we just had a stop day in Montauk on Saturday, and while I was out there, I was talking to some of our town employees, including Kyle Lynch, and he was suggesting that we increase and add one more stop day. We normally do one in May and one in November. You know, first one is in East Hampton, second one is in Montauk. We just went out for bid on the stop days, so we could send out an addendum if we want to add a third day. So we've reached out, Jeannie has reached out to Steve and Craig to see if that's something we want to do. You know, they're the folks that are on the ground. They, you know, there was a line, there was a queue on Saturday in Montauk, and at that point, I mean, it turned out to be a beautiful day, but when I was there in the morning, it was raining. But it's, you know, folks want to take advantage of it. So I think it's something we may be at that point where we need a third stop day.
I would support that because the environmental benefits of that, instead of individuals potentially taking the easy way and just throwing it into the general garbage stream, non-recyclable. Yeah, non-recyclable, there's a different word for it. Apologize, but also just into a storm drain.
Yeah.
These opportunities here, I think that's well worth looking into.
Great, I'm glad I...
The only comment I had also...
Would everybody support that, having a third day?
The only comment with all this construction here is just be very aware of it. There's a lot of construction going on there. I know there's signage that is up also at the recycling center there then too. So as to contractors that might be going in, just make sure you ask, ask the scale house appropriately, because certain things have changed locations too.
That is a very good point as well. Coming around that corner, I know there is a traffic pattern there, but as you come around that corner, there is, at the time, because of dumpsters and whatnot, a blind spot. And you have to be wary of, of course, the contractors are very wary of where they're going, but it takes, you know, two would be better.
Yeah, and as we get into the height of leaf season right now, then too, many more residents will be coming to the recycling center for the organic waste aspect of it, not necessarily commercial C and D waste, but just make sure that the traffic, understand that there's traffic patterns there that are changing based on this massive amount of construction.
So we may want to put that out on social media. So we should probably maybe, Patrick, coordinate with James so that we can make, give people a heads up that this is happening.
Very well.
Becky has her hand raised. You got to come up here.
Becky Hanson, Town Administrator. Quick question on the stop day. If you want to do the addendum for the third day, what time of year do you want to do it? Is there a preferred month? Because the way the RFP is written, does specify two dates in there. So think about when you actually want to have that third day, because we'll put it in the addendum. Do you want to do it in the summer, July, August? I mean, what's your thought?
I would feel summer simply for the fact that, you know, it's those people who aren't here year-round, giving them the opportunity to kind of get rid of that waste in the right way.
Correct. And if you get, yeah, if you have oil-based paints on there, and they've gone through a winter and they've frozen up, they're not going to be usable, and we're making sure that the residents might, that might not be here during the wintertime. I think there'd be a greater result. I agree with that. Yeah.
So I'll have her add a July date to that.
Yeah, I mean, confirm that with Steve Lynch and Craig Fick, just to make sure that works for them, but I think it would make sense.
Thanks.
And if it's during the summer, it might not be on a Saturday. Maybe it's on a Thursday or Tuesday. Sorry.
Busiest days.
It is, actually.
This is actually a new structure there that's got the drain pipe leading up to another new structure. And that's a couple of new structures, what they actually look like. Westlake Dock Repair. I don't know if people have driven through there. You can't really see from the street. You can see the cranes and the stuff, but you can't really see the work that's being done unless you're a local fisherman and you happen to be using the pier.
Well, you're doing a video on the, about the dredge the Oyster Bay.
Or if you're frequenting, you know, you like the dock restaurant and the Watsons down there too.
Restaurant could be there for sure. Very true. So this work is being done by Keith Grimes Incorporated, our construction company. The work is to rehabilitate the entire dock. I know the emergency slip at the end had received some damage. However, this assessment and renovation is for the entire dock. Not to say that we're going to take it apart and rebuild it. It's going to be looked at piece by piece, and what needs to be replaced or repaired or upgraded will get that attention. As far as the drainage in the street that has all been done, I think that people who frequent the area, they know that it's prone to becoming a little pond there. So we fixed that problem by replacing some of the drainage structures, all the drainage piping, and we also added a check valve into it so that the water from high tides can't push back up in there as it previously had been doing. So now that's going to keep it up.
More parking, won't it?
It could, yeah. Definitely along the concrete there.
I think it'd make more usable parking. Yeah, more usable, but it wasn't usable when it's ponding. Yeah. Correct. And then add that aspect of it, that the Town, two years ago, Town Board supported the commercial fishing gear storage behind the Westlake Comfort Station. The fisheries gear is not in that location anymore, and then I think we can even beautify it after that area then too.
A couple of plantings and bench, maybe?
Exactly. Yeah.
Absolutely. So that's just a picture of the existing dock. You actually see the little pond there. So that's where the drainage basically took that away. So this is a little area of ponding, which was probably about a foot and a half, two feet deep there at any given time after a storm. So, next, please. So this is an image of the existing or old bulkhead that had to be replaced. This is them driving in new sheets, vertical sheets for that bulkhead. They interlock, and they become one. So that's an image of new bulkhead. So that's an image of new bulkhead with the electrical just kind of propped over temporarily. This is um, in order to keep the bulkhead and everything uh together, they use these um, that a tieback system. And these are actually vertical beams that are put into the ground to be used to tie with tie rods into the next section that goes into the bulkhead. To keep everything together. It doesn't matter, you know, storms or anything like that, it's gonna, that's gonna hold all together. And this is how that works. There's the new bulkhead, those are the, the dead, well, the vertical pieces, the vertical beams. They do have a name called dead men, but you know, we'd rather just say vertical beams. Um, and that'll tie from there with tie rods into um, the bulkhead. The bulkhead basically ties into this tie beam here with these rods and then this is all connected back to those other ones.
So I could just go back to that if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
For the viewing audience on there, again, this is a nearly a $2 million project. This is the second largest uh, uh. Commercial dock that we have. Uh, uh, the supervisor made sure that we had funding for this as, after we did the uh, the Star Island commercial dock. Again, is the town board making sure that we're prioritizing our, our fishing fleet and putting money into our infrastructure. This dock actually at one point was owned by the county then too. Uh, and then the county actually gave it to the town, I think, I want to say like a dollar type, uh, uh, you know, um, transaction. One point, I know uh, a, a past supervisor potentially wanted to sell it. I'm happy they did not. We are working together with the commercial fishing fleet. We've had meetings with them. The reason why we're starting with this aspect of uh, of the tiebacks and also the bulkheading. Is the first fishing fleet's still there. As the season goes on, some boats will come out and as we work our way down the dock. Uh, allows the prolonged seizing of fishing, uh, for the fishing fleet that's there. Also, one of the things you'll notice here is that we're increasing the height of, of the um, of the bulkheading there. And that is because of global warming, okay, and sea level rise. So we're preparing our infrastructure but uh, and insulation for a greater amount of rains or also a greater amount of tides on there then too. At the end, end is an emergency slip. And if you're in Montauk yesterday, besides the barge, the dredge and everything, you would see in a different boat that's not in our fishing fleet. That took, took refuge at our, at our, uh, end of our slip yesterday in our emergency slip that was probably getting caught in the gale that's out there. So it's very important, not just for our fishing fleet, but also as a port of refuge for others to be able to tie up at this location. And uh, um, the, the mariners that are on that dock are happy with the contractor right now and are also happy with the town board. For it, so I thank the supervisor for putting this project forward out at, uh, in advance because this project was going to be about a year, year later. So, thank you Kathy.
Right, currently we have uh some leaks that lead down into our attorney's office, the town attorney's offices. This is due to the plaza, the brick plaza that we have out there doubles, not just as a patio, but as a roof, roofing system. It was um drainage and a membrane, kind of like a flat roof that was protecting the offices down below. Well, it turns out that over the years, these drainage systems that are in there, there's three drainage systems that actually weren't working properly. So water was allowed to pool there and sit there and eventually, no matter how good the membrane underneath it is, eventually it's going to find its way through and that's, that's what occurred. So currently, the crew is out there, they removed the brick. Um, they're going to reuse the existing brick. Um, so they just stacked it off to the side. And they're inspecting the membrane, they've, they've cut out the areas around the drainage so they can replace the drainage. Um, and that's where we're at, at this time. There is a possibility that if that membrane is found to be intact, that we can recondition it, which would be great and we wouldn't have to replace it. Um, but they're, they're going through the process right now of inspecting everything and testing everything.
Will the final um, construction be identical to what is there right now?
For the most part, yeah. There's going to be some areas where there's additional um, flashing. Uh, because we have the, the cedar that basically came right down to the brick patio. So there's going to be some flashing underneath that to, you know, overlap the membrane. But for the most part, it's going to look identical.
Now, the reason I bring that up, I know in the past the um, disability advisories committee has kind of looked at that as being an alternative entrance for ADA access. And the possibility of having a parking space out by that and the ra- a ramp coming up. I don't know if that's a change order that could be considered. But um, i- i- if we're digging that up and replacing it, this might be the time to kind of explore that option more fully.
Thank you.
So James, that project, they're supposed to go through what, January?
Yeah, this should be sometime in January, it'll be finished. I don't want to put a fine date on it because, you know, we don't know.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a dance party going, it's right outside of my window and.
Yes, it is.
They have the radio going. Um. But we had that, that garden there that was done by the East Hampton Garden Club. Uh, we had removed some of the plantings, uh, brought them over to the senior center. There's probably still plantings that could be removed. And the garden club is going to be coming back once the project is complete and doing something that's uh in line with the native landscaping that Change Hampton and, and folks have done here. But is less maintenance because what they had planted there was, took a lot of maintenance and weeding and whatnot. So they're gonna look maybe trees or some kind of foundation plantings there. So that's like step two after the project's completed, just so you know.
Okay. I'm glad to see that some of those nicer plants, like some large plants were in there that were repurposed.
Yeah, I know Diane and Isaac came over and they removed some of the plants. But there are probably other plants that can be taken out and repurposed. We should probably let Steve O'Brien know.
Very good. All right, that's uh, that's there. So this is an image of, with the membrane still intact of one of the drainage um. Structures there. So that's some insulation, the blue there, but the membrane is underneath there. So right now, that's uh, I guess about. 12 inch diameter from the center of that drain is chopped out. Um, you know, showing the, the roof underneath it and they're gonna remove that and replace those drains. Carson's Blacksmith Shop siding replacement. This is a, a, a fun project because there's not a lot to it, but it's, it's a, one of those things that once it's done, it's instant gratification of what you, what the product you see. So uh, this is awarded to Runaway Builders. They began this in September. They should be complete here shortly in November. So what they had to do there is, uh, we can go to the next part, please. Uh, next one, even. Thank you. So as you can see, the, the image on the right, well, basically all of it, but the image on the right is a clearer picture of uh, how the siding was actually cupping and coming off of the building. So that the, this project is to replace all that vertical siding.
Yeah, we had already done the windows, correct?
Correct. Um, it was quite a while ago, so some of them needed more attention. I think it was uh 95. So some of it needed attention, some sills needed attention.
The Springs Historical Society has done a tremendous job of clearing out that space because there used to be, when the blacksmith was there, you could basically only stand in the doorway. And we weren't giving access because it wasn't safe. And now it's, you're free to roam in that lower.
It became storage for anything old. But no, the, the Springs Historical Society did, did a great job and now you can access, you know, 360 full loop in there. And you saw during Springs Fest, it was open and heavily used and it's a really cool building.
So this is after they removed the existing siding. And that's what the south side looks like currently.
Yes.
Now that will get another paint job to cover all the, the, all the nails there. They had to be pre-drilled and then you have um, the cut nails, which are, you know, what they would have used back, back then. So, but they have a, a large head, so rather than seeing that silver head, we're gonna, everything's gonna get painted again with red.
Will the grass come back here or is it, are we gonna have to seed or what's?
So with that area there, that, that tree that you kind of see in the top left corner was actually touching the building. So that grass probably never got any sun for a long time, but um, we could definitely uh, at this point, you know, well, probably in the, in the spring. Seed it and, and get grass grown there again, rather than wait for it to come back naturally, but.
I, I would like to add potentially one option here is like, I think the boards that they're using now are actually pre-painted onsite when they've been delivered. Boards that are there, a lot of the, us bowing in there is coming because the water's bouncing off the ground. We need to add a drip edge, you know, like a, you know, a, a marble, a stone, you know. A birdstone, peystone type thing drip edge, so the water doesn't bounce back up onto the wood.
It's kind of similar to what's on the east side.
Exactly.
It's, it's hard to see it, but it's, they have that on the east. It's not, not enough of it in my opinion, but it is there on the east side. Yeah, that's, that's a great idea.
And it would be able to preserve the length of, of the restoration effort. For a minor amount of money.
Great. Possibly even in-house. So the land building egress stairs on their south side of the building, uh, from the second floor so they can have egress out. There was a, a set of stairs there that was found to be uh pretty rickety and not in, not in good shape. And um, it was necessary to replace it. So we had Austin Interiors complete this job. LKMA engineered this project. And it was actually completed a few weeks ago, well, in October. There is one thing that still needs to be done. There's a little piece of handrail for ADA, you have to have, you have to have a continuous um handrail. And there is a transition, the last transition at the bottom of the stairs where you would, you have about a foot gap from one handrail to the, to the other one. So they, they're gonna give us a piece to correct that. But other than that, it's, it's complete. Those are the plans. And that's what the stairs look like now. And they are very solid.
You can see that gap there on the right.
Yes.
It's about plywood, yeah.
Uh, can we go back one? Thank you, Patrick. There's a gap there. This piece here has to connect to this one, but there's your hand, so the, the handrail didn't have that piece with it, so they're probably, I think they're gonna custom make one and then bring it out and just install it.
Just want to say thank you to the housing department and trustees. I know that, that construction was loud and disruptive and so they, they lived through a lot of that, so I appreciate that.
So that, to the history wunks and listening here, that building's got a lot of history to it. Lot of naval, uh, coast guard history to it. It was a listening post with German communique. There used to be two large antenna towers on each side of it. Some old pictures there. Uh, it was now being repurposed to the town, housing trustees are in there, our Dory rescue squads in there. Uh, there's a, there's a plethora of history and it's within the, you know, historical, uh, in the Bluff Road Historical District too, if you ever want to go research it.
Okay, um, still up and coming, we have the town hall window and siding restoration. Uh, we spoke, I spoke about this on my last update as well, but um. The project since then has been awarded to Runaway Builders and um. And that's all I got to say about that one. Nothing else has really changed except for it's been awarded. So hopefully we can get it off and going soon.
Long time coming.
Yeah, it's, yeah, absolutely. And again, with that one, it's going to be done, the facade and everything uh will be done in stages. It's not going to be done all at once, it'll be done side by side basically. Okay, upcoming projects that we have on the horizon, we have YMCA pickup all courts. Uh, currently the village um, has, there's a village permitting fee. And LKMA is, is actually uh, going to be taking, addressing that for us, which is great. Um, the Peach Farmhouse restoration, that's the same story.
Say the first one again?
So the village permitting fee, you know, LKMA is going to uh, help us with that. So need to get through that. Once we have that permitting, that building permits, basically, we can, we can start construction there.
Have, have we previously been charged building permit fees on village?
Not that I, not that I understand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any explanation given as to why they did that at all or no?
No. Uh, same thing with the, the Peach Farmhouse. Uh, the justice, the justice court, uh, both courtrooms and the hallway are going to be painted as part of this um, last phase of interior renovation. So. Uh, Montauk Playhouse Generator. The town has received a proposal for engineering services. For this installation of a new, more adequately sized generator because the current one doesn't power everything. The one we, we want is going to be heat, AC, lights, kitchen equipment. Et cetera. Um, whether or not we include a pool pump room equipment. It's, it's going to depend on how, how big it's going to have to be and how much it's going to cost. I feel that when you get up around two weeks or so, whatever, you know, lack of, of motors running that would cause any harm to the pool. You're already past the stage, you're, you're in a disaster, you know, stage where you would, you know, be using insurance to cover things. Or the other explanation, the other thing that you could do is just drain the pool out, shut it down. So I think if that is the way to go to save us a, a bunch of money on, on a overly large generator, then perhaps we just leave the, the pool equipment off. But we, we have to see what they come back with.
So the new generator would effectively power the new upda- upstairs space and the kitchens up there as well as the old existing space.
Correct.
Just not the pumping system.
What I've spect uh, from the engineer is that I want to see it both ways, but it would, it would be nice to see everything except for the pool equipment room, everything else.
Right, showers definitely would be, yeah, okay, great.
And uh, actually as of yesterday, Stephen Hans Path Multi-Use Field, uh, they started working on their stairs. So we got a set of uh concrete stairs, similar to the other ones that are already installed, that's going to be closer, well, basically on the uh, the north side of the, this, the seating. So. dumps, north side.
Yeah, and that, east side. Yeah, that, that facility is seeing a plethora of use at nighttime, particularly because the lighted field on there, then too, is a great decision by the town board. Uh, but it's still seen a lot of use now getting into almost lacrosse and even more so. Uh, by the Bonneville High School football team.
Excellent.
Who is in the second round of the playoffs at six o'clock at Sayville this Friday, 6:00 PM, Sayville this Friday. My Lee is on report early for everyone.
That's awesome.
I mean, they, they really took it to ice slip. I went up to that game. They, 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 they had a great game. The team is playing very confidently for Jolene McKee. So everyone watch, should go if you can. Cheer loudly for Bonneville. Sorry.
We enjoy it, David, don't you?
I did, man. Penn State ain't playing well, so. That's all I have for you.
Ohio State is playing well, isn't it?
A little too well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else for James?
No.
Nope. James, we appreciate the weekly reports. It's really helpful with, with all the visuals.
Yeah, I try to get a lot of pictures in there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, James.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Scott Wilson to take us through the John Osborne Homestead Draft Management Plan. Welcome, Scott.
To me, it really sounds like James doesn't have enough to do, so I'm looking forward to burying him in the new year with the car fisher restoration. Um, okay. So um, the town acquired a remarkable parcel at 66 Wayne Scott Main Street in December of '24. The town board also dedicated structures on this property as a John Osborne Homestead Historic Landmark in March of this year. The reason I'm here is to present a draft management plan for this property that the property management committee has been working on over the last several months. Big thank you to them. It's been great. I'm glad they've been reconstituted, revitalized, however you want to describe that, but it's been great to work with them. Um, the property management committee meetings are open to the public, so we had a number of comments from guests during our meetings and those comments and changes are reflected in this draft plan. The plan, like all our plans, follows a basic guideline, including an introduction, a description of the site. Access and parking, general management goals and objectives, recommended improvements, permitted uses, and restrictions. Each plan also contains supporting documents such as photos, resolution to acquire, survey, and in this case, uh, Stewart Preservation Service's historic report. And the history of the Osbournes on Wayne Scott Pond by Hillary Osborne Malecki, which is great and worth reading. The, this information can become a valuable guide for future management of a property. The primary concepts, plans, and intentions are found in the management goals of objectives, always are, section of each plan. So under goals and objectives, the primary goal is to encourage public enjoyment of this historical homestead. And through it gain an environmental, economic, and sociological understanding of the evolution of Wayne Scott from the early 19th century to the present day. Any proposed changes, addition, construction, or modification to the building or grounds must be reviewed through the lens of. must be reviewed through the lens of Ushad Preservation as a primary consideration. That was very important to the committee in all of our discussions and in all things. The plan notes that there are a number of structures and distinct areas on the property, each having been identified in the plan, each allowing the town board a broad range of uses and some flexibility. For the nineteen oh four Louisa Edwards Onboard's House, the seventeenth century Osborne Barn, which we actually refer to this document, uh, to as its current use, which is sort of garage residence above, the playhouse and the remainder of the land beyond the structures. While it does, that, excuse me, while the plan does contain some specificity, we also allow flexibility. Therefore, the plan contemplates one or more licensees, uh, possibly working with a farmer, working with five oh one C three, and it contemplates the possibility of a multi-use path. Again, under the general management goals and objectives introduction, the John Osborne Homestead property stated purpose for acquisition is open space, agricultural lands, historic places and property, and the protection and improvement of water quality. As a former farmstead, often the backbone of many small communities, this unique property lends itself to any and all of these purposes or a combination thereof. At the time of this writing, this is, I'm just giving you snippets from the plan, the town board does not have a specific use or user group in mind. It is recommended that a clear understanding of the community need within this area of Wayne Scott should be sought in order to help inform the town board's decision with the end use of this property. In conjunction with seeking restoration plans, the town board should consider issuing a request for proposal for uses and user groups for the structures and grounds, hence flexibility in this type of document is a must. The town is already following some of these recommendations, I'm happy to report. We're already, we've already hired an engineer who is creating, um, a scope of work, cost estimate, and building plans to help arrest any deterioration of the house, which currently has a number of leaks to the roof, some of the windows, rotted sills, and so that water is actually entering through the sidewalls when it rains. And so in order to arrest, uh, any and all of that intrusion, to help preserve the buildings, um, we hired, uh, Drew Bennett. And we're in the process of hiring Stewart Preservation Services to ensure we file the Sec- Secretary of Interiors Historic Restoration Guidelines. I'm super happy that, um, a number of the public actually has been coming to our meetings, it's open meetings, the property management committee. Um, like I said, we've incorporated the comments that we've gotten so far. I did, um, hear Jane come up and speak earlier, and she's got some more stuff for us to review and comment on and potentially add to this document. No management plan that we create is perfect. Um, that isn't the goal of the document, otherwise we'd never progress forward in anything that we do. However, um, there's always room for improvement, so I'm kind of anxious to hear if the town board has any specific comments or changes to this document. I know Ian is going to propose a couple now, and I'm also glad to hear any comments from the public. I mean, this is the first opportunity to discuss it publicly, um, before we actually go out, um, and, and schedule this for public hearing. And so any changes that we can incorporate now into the document, all the better as opposed to getting them at the last minute at the public hearing. So I'm actually glad we get to talk about this at work session before we go on to public hearing. That wasn't always the case in the distant past, and I'm glad it's the new procedure for moving forward. So if the town board has any additional comments regarding this document, um, I'm glad to pull up any pages, if there's anything specific that you want to talk about.
Why don't you take the lead?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Scott, for, for all of your work on this. You know, Scott's been, been a great, uh, help in the property management committee with these management plans and, and all things C P F properties. And I want to thank the committee, you know, the committee, uh, I see Lauren Bolger is here, who's on that committee. Um, it's a very strong group of people, I think, um, who get right to work and have the best interests of the town in mind. And with all of these recently purchased properties with historic structures, I think it's a very important committee, um, that we come up with management plans and also maintain the structures. So as Scott said, we did identify some, some issues with the roof, and so we're, we're trying to find an end user for this, uh, you know, licensee for this place. At the same time, we want to get going on those repairs, so there's not any sort of further deterioration, because the house is, is really, really beautiful and in very good shape, but of course, if we don't act soon, um, it could be, so we're doing both things simultaneously. As Scott mentioned, uh, my approach to this has been, and I think the committees as well, to keep management plans as open-ended as possible while being specific with what we do or don't want to have happen there. This property in particular is such a, a vast property with two significance, well, three structures, two of them very significant. Frankly, I don't know who would apply to an R F P that we issue, and so we wanted to make sure that we didn't preclude, you know, good proposals by being overly restrictive. And so there, there is a, a, a good fair bit of, um, generalness about this management plan, which I think is appropriate, because as we go out to R F P, we'll be able to evaluate applicants, you know, on their individual merits. Um, another important note is, you know, the community's been very, very involved. That was outreach by several people in the Wayne Scott, uh, community, asking when would be the appropriate time to comment? I wanted to hear those comments at the committee level so that we could adjust this plan accordingly. Um, not all of the comments are incorporated, and of course, we still welcome them now, but I do think it was a, um, a very productive process and a balance between the committee doing their work and also being transparent and open to members of, uh, the community who, who cared. Um, my, one very specific, uh, change that I have, and this is the only one, and again, my, I, I wanted to let the committee have their own recommendation for this management plan and not have it be only my own, even though I'm liaison there. And, and my one specific change that I would recommend is in the section remainder of land beyond the structures.
What page is that?
Uh, it is page six. Um, I would just like to strike the third point there. Remainder land beyond the structures, it says if the town considers allowing agriculture, farming with organic and low till, low no-till soil practices are recommended, no deer fence. Now, to be clear, the committee felt fairly strongly, um, as did the community frankly, that there's, there should be no deer fence there, because the vista is a primary, uh, goal. That's expressed elsewhere in this document, that the vista is, is a primary goal. I worry about the precedent of, of getting very specific about how it may be used for agriculture, if agriculture is chosen, and I, I don't think that that would set a good precedent. I think there's ample opportunity. I'm not sure that farming is the right, um, use for this property in the end, but I don't think this particular line item is necessary or helpful, um, as we go to R F P. But otherwise, uh, you know, I look forward to reading the document from the Wayne Scott Heritage, um, Foundation and to the board, board members' comments.
Yeah, I'll just, uh, add, um, I, I would like to hear, uh, the comments. I, I believe we'll be receiving the comments from Wayne Scott Heritage, um, so I reserve, um, any further comments based on what's coming with that. And I just want to, uh, make sure it's perfectly clear that water quality projects such as a permeable barrier can be put underground here, uh, at, at this location, as that was a very important part of the purchase. Um, to me, it was as important as preserving history and the vista was, uh, due to the quality of water, uh, at that pond, which is toxic right now, that, that we are, we do have the ability to put, to improve the, the pond with whatever kind of, uh, systems we need. So I just want assurance that what it says for water quality and access covers all that, Scott.
We'll take another look, but I think it does right now. Um, you know, it's difficult since we don't know what other technologies are coming, PRBs in particular are easy enough because they're subsurface, so while you see equipment that actually does the installation, once they're gone, you see nothing, it's a round circle in the ground. So, you know, that would be a, a, a great opportunity if we can get those installed.
And I think that's an example of where it was left fairly general, it just says various types of water quality improvement, because we wanted to allow for what we know about and maybe new technology as well, and I think that it's appropriately broad.
Yeah, just, it says, uh, water quality and pro- uh, projects on a defined area of the property and waters edge is necessary, so, um, just want to ensure that that, that's, uh, doesn't restrict anything that could do the job.
So would you recommend that I run a binat resource to ensure that the, the language is appropriate?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think it restricts, I think it allows for, and, and it's going to come from an application and that the board will have to approve.
Yep.
Approve that. And I think if I could just go into that one subsection there, and that one subsection, knowing that the, that the pond is actually owned by the trustees, uh, I'd just like to change the language in the last sentence, it says, as the only, only public land with access to Wayne Scott Pond, uh, this plan will also allow the town trustees access across upland to the pond. We work very well with the trustees, but we are two separate governmental entities and owners of adjacent properties. I think it, it should state that this plan could also allow the town trustees access across upland to the pond with town board authorization on there then too. Uh, I think it's appro- it's appropriate, but you know, it doesn't give, this plan shouldn't give carte blanche to any neighboring property owner or municipality to go across the town's land without authorization. It's a very simple change, and I think it will still be able to get, you know, the same accomplishment of water quality projects, just as making sure everyone is on the same page.
I support that.
Yeah, I'm going through, Ian's comments on point three, I, I understand. I mean, look, when we purchased this, it was, uh, historical and agricultural at the time, and I think, uh, we have to be very careful about, you know, what restrictions we place on agricultural operations there. I, I acknowledge wholly that, you know, improving the water quality of that adjacent body is, is critical, um, and we don't want activities taking place on there that might further degrade the water quality there. With that said, in order for any potential agricultural operation to be viable, um, things like deer fence, um, and, and, you know, other entities, like I, I would be very wary of being overly restrictive of what agricultural can do in, in that sense for them to succeed, so, um, I would support that. Um, you know, I, I think overall with this management plan, I mean, I, I like that you have emphasized, you know, we don't want to be too specific in defining our guidelines here. You know, I, I'm going to make the analogy here to Brooks Park, because it's, you know, the one property I kind of really closely worked with. I, I just, I think we have to have consistency in that across all our town properties and all our licensees when we're looking at that, because I, I support that in this instance, and I support that with regards to other town properties. Um, so, you know, I applaud you for bringing it in here, I just want to make sure we're being consistent with how we apply that to town properties.
I think that also depends on what the enabling legis- legislation is that we purchased the property for. You know, those definitions, um, have to be consistent, the management plan has to be consistent with those, with those purposes.
Yeah, I think if there's a management plan in place, which there is, then, you know, it should, should be followed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, thought that this is a very thoughtful plan and glad it got so much community input on it. It sounds like, though, if Wayne Scott Heritage Project wants to come back with comments, we're bringing this back for work session in December.
Yeah, I think so. I, I, yeah, I think, I mean, this is a really significant property. Um, I think this is a very important step to have it aired before the full public, um, but a hundred percent, I think we should look at those comments and consider them. One other thing I forgot to, and by the way, the water quality comments, I support both of what Kate and Dave said, I think that we should ensure that it's, serves the intended purposes of being open-minded about water quality, because that was a big part of this, and I agree that Dave, with Dave, that we should, you know, trustee access with town board approval is appropriate, so it's not a blanket approval, but obviously, it's the intention of this board to allow them access. The only other thing I forgot to say in my introduction is that, um, you know, Scott has gone out of his way to include a historic preservationist on this property, and that was also feedback that we heard from the public, and just makes sense. You know, having an engineer involved to make sure structurally it's sound, um, and that's something we intend to do on, on all, um, historic properties going forward. So fully supportive of that, it's, it's actually, Long Island does not have a ton of historic preservationists, and so who we choose and who we find on each property is a little bit tricky, but just wanted to say that that was also, that also came from feedback, and I'm fully supportive.
So, I'm so sorry, I, I just wanted to come with the water quality. So I had also, uh, two things, remainder land behind the structures on there. Uh, number one, uh, is determined by the planning, planning department, I think it should be potentially as reviewed by the planning department and determined by the town board on there. Uh, town board's the final agency here. Uh, number three, I also, I also agree with that. Uh, I mean, I think there can be deer fencing that is low deer fence, and we see that at the airport, so there's different designs, so I would support removing that. I also want to thank Hillary, uh, uh, Osborne Malecki, uh, for her information here. If you go through here, there's actually five forms of agricultural crops that were presented in the historical data there, from strawberries to pumpkins to wheat to potatoes to cows, then too, have all been historical agriculture and agrarian, uh, roots on this property then too. So again, I agree with what Tom said, uh, agrarian use of this property, it's been what has been there for four hundred years. And personally, as it goes forward, I wouldn't mind hearing about how we can do that in a thoughtful way. But again, consistency, thoughtfulness, balance, um, and I think Ian, well done and getting this done in a timely way, and I look forward to hearing from the Wayne Scott Heritage Association and other residents also on their views, and then we can get this to the public hearing, obviously, and too.
Yeah, it's funny, I was just going to say too, that the appendices, what you've included is tremendous, and, and including, I believe, the history of the Osbournes on Wayne Scott Pond, that was the presentation, I believe Hillary did when we had the public hearing, so.
Right.
To have included that and incorporated into the management plan was great.
And, and Scott and, and, and the committee, I think, deserve the, the credit on that one, but without Hillary's, you know, historic and personal knowledge, it would not have been, um, nearly the same, so I really appreciate all of her input.
That was a great read.
Yeah.
For sure.
So ne- next steps, Ian?
Next steps, I think we should all read the, the, you know, the comments that are submitted, hopefully this will elicit more public comments. Um, I think we should read those, bring it back to another work session, and then depending how that goes.
We can shoot for one in December.
That'd be great. And again, and in the meantime, we're progressing with the sort of, the stabilization of structures, and so we can be thoughtful about this management plan, finding a licensee without, you know, putting everything else on hold, and Scott and I have been working on that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Scott, don't go anywhere. You're up again for the Wayne Scott Green Management Plan, uh, we're looking at a draft update.
Yeah, this one's pretty short. Okay. So the Wayne Scott Green, um, Draft Management Plan, um, it was actually formally approved via Resolution two thousand nineteen dash eleven oh five, and this plan also allowed for some flexibility. However, no, uh, plan can really contemplate, you know, all things, changes, or proposals from outside entities. Um, I was here when Hampton's Pride made a presentation to the town board at a work session, gosh, it was some time ago now, and it was, um, replete with, uh, a number of changes, um, you know, um, honoring their goals, um, I think presented a number of, um, potential memorial-type sculptures, um, including a representation of the dance floor, um, some pathways, additional pathways, uh, to and from the dance floor and so on.
And a memorial garden.
And memorial, yes, absolutely, absolutely. So, so the plan, when we wrote it at the time, didn't really allow for the addition of that type of, uh, infrastructure, and so the only change in this document is really one sentence, uh, one additional, uh, piece of verbiage, let me just roll down to it, you can see it up on your screen. So in consideration of a presentation by Hampton's Pride, allow for the installation of a historical marker reminiscent of the former swamp dance floor and associated memorial sculptures and/or access paths subject to town board approval and any associated town permits. Hampton's Pride presentation was very comprehensive, but again, the existing plan had not contemplated some of the proposed improvements and monuments. This change will give the town board some flexibility to determine if it wishes to allow the installation of some, all, or none of those proposed changes. I'm pretty comfortable with this, because, you know, at the end of the day, ultimately, it's the town board who gets to decide whether you move forward on any of these things, and so, you know, while this change is substantive, it's, you know, it has, it's built-in controls for, you know, town board purview.
And I think this is timely, because, uh, I've, uh, met with Tom House, and, uh, they're ready to discuss moving forward and have set up a meeting with Tina Legoren, uh, planning director to, and a town attorney, to talk about what permits and what path forward, uh, he would need to go forward with the dance floor and the memorial garden. So I'd like number eleven, um, which says it's a restricted, uh, placement of memorials, plaques, benches, art installations, except by town board resolution, so I, I think that's the, the enabling sentence, uh, in the management plan that gives us the ability to look at that memorial.
Scott, is there any language in here that would allow for an adopt a park?
All, all our preserves have the ability to do and adopt a preserve, with, there's an application process, um, goes through our department, you know, we'll, uh, I'll get that to the town board, they also have, uh, like hold harmless agreements if they're going to do any work. This is for things, um, you know, modest pruning, um, not lifting anything over twenty-five pounds, we already checked this, ran this through our insurance, um, and so you can't lift more than twenty-five pounds, you can't use power or equipment, but you could, um, potentially use a shovel or, or pruning shears or something of the like, certainly picking up trash and really being the eyes and ears of our department, because we have six thousand acres to monitor and manage, you know, we can't be all places at all times, and so we're fortunate that some of our adopters, you know, really keep us in the loop, because they're, they're probably more often than we are.
So a little bit of the history of this management plan, this management plan came from the Nature Preserve Committee eight years ago, well. I have my glasses on, probably be able to read it, seven, seven years ago-ish. I have my glasses on, probably be able to read it, seven, seven years ago-ish. And that it was one of the locations with the first multi-user path. But in that time, it was determined to use stone dust, which is an ADA capable multi-user path. But unfortunately, as pretty much had warned at that time, that it's a lot of maintenance for stone dust paths. So I know there is increased maintenance that is needed on there and there might be individuals that might want to adopt a preserve. They take that maintenance on because it can be a burden on town staff also. So as we move forward, other, you know, multi-user paths or options, I think long-term maintenance, as the board is very quite aware of my stance on there. Something should always be applied to as a standard of discussion for these types of installations of like, like such also.
So you read my mind because I had marked on page four under short term, a compacted aggregate path that meets ADA standards should connect the central sitting and walking areas with the parking lot and any adjoining public sidewalks. And I was going to ask you, how is that working out? Because I know in other, uh, applications where we did the Tony Duke, you know, and the Zach Cohen path, we asphalted those. And, um,
So I think, okay, that's questions to me.
Yeah.
The first, to my knowledge, the town's first installation of a stone dust path was done at Amagansett Life Saving Station. It's an ADA path that go from Atlantic Avenue around to the ADA access point in the, in the back ramp on there. It takes a tremendous amount of, at that location, because I know that one pretty well, of, of maintenance to keep it compacted during the rain or weed it also. You have to bring your, you have to weed, you have to weed it, uh, hand weed it, you know, with a stirr, rake. You then have to compact it with a compaction machine on there. The one at the Wayne Scott Green still needs a lot of work every couple of months after rains and, and just to make sure it looks attractive. I think it's one of the parts, parts, I want my, sorry, as a town board member, I like to see my parks in the town of East Hampton for the residents be attractive and maintained. This is just, it's, it's harder to maintain this location than any of the other multi-user paths of the long answer to the short answer.
Got it.
Yeah, I, I'm fully supportive of this. My, my one question with the dance floor memorial piece is again, actually goes back to the maintenance piece. Like, should it be damaged? Should it deteriorate with the weather? Do we feel adequately protected that the maintenance and the repair and, you know, construction of this are something that will be undertaken by parties outside the town or is this a town responsibility to maintain that?
I think, I think that's a little bit to be, to be determined still. It seems like they're going to be using outside stone materials, uh, long lasting woods on there then too. And as the discussion goes for Hampton Pride and Tom and their potential contractor, we can make sure of that then too. And I, I would agree with you on there, but it seems like it's mostly stone that could last up for decades.
Stone with some carvings and some colors, right?
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Yeah, I'm supportive of, of this change as well. I, I think there's another step. We'd have to approve the specifics of anything that actually, that had, that happened. I do think it'll be important that any installation would have to be, you know, park-like in setting. And I remember that presentation. I thought it was very, very good. And as Scott said, there's plenty of time for us to then be, um, careful about the, the details. As far as the, the path surface, I think this is a really important conversation that actually could have come up in the Wayne Scott property as well. I've heard from a lot of the public that they want the more natural look, but I think Dave is right that the maintenance is a real problem there. And so, um, we need to find the balance. I've spoken with Scott about this. Are there natural surfaces that are going to require less maintenance or be maintainable over time? And I think it's something we should continue to look, look into. The ones that are asphalt, I think are really heavily used and great. But is there, you know, balance there for every property? Maybe there, there, there's a, a different look. And, and going back to the, um, 66 Main, Main Street in Wayne Scott. One of my proposals for the idea of a trail would be just to mow something first to see what it looks like before we commit to anything. But I'll bring that back up at the next work session.
So next steps, Scott, on this would be to?
Uh, I'll schedule for public hearing.
Schedule for public hearing?
Yeah.
We're ready to do that. Notice it on the 20th. I'm ready to go to public hearing.
I'm comfortable with the language also, yes.
Me too.
So it's not something you need to bring back to the Wayne Scott CAC? They're aware of this, right? Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
And they're overall quite supportive of the memorial, so they'll be happy that there's language allowing it potentially. Beautiful. Okay, Charlie, you're up next to talk about gross floor area, uh, code discrepancies. I know you sent around a memo to us and also had the planning board weigh in.
Yep, yes. So when the board, uh, did the change of the GFA calculations, both the 20,000 to 10,000 and then the, the calculation numbers from the 10, uh, 10% plus 16 to the 7% plus 1500. It was, all that was done. And when it went to E-codes, part of the problem is we have those attachments that have all the, uh, the different residential zoning calculations on it. And when that was sent to E-codes, I, Carol knows more about it than I do. I guess they don't look at the attachments or something. Yeah. So they didn't look at the attachment. So one of the changes wasn't done. So the code currently, there's a conflict between what the new GFAs are and what's actually in the code. So, yeah. So I think we did it, yeah. Yeah. And they did it on the first page, but there's the second page of the chart, which is kind of a, it's seldom used, but it's still used. So it probably just was an oversight. So this was just to clean that up. And, uh, so there's that, there's two spots that need to be fixed and not really changing it, not, nothing really substantive. It's more of just to try to get this, everything to line up and be properly, you know, across the code.
I, I support. I think we should have the code be consistent across all sections.
And planning board already, uh, they already reviewed it. They obviously didn't have any problems with it because it's basically the same thing.
So does this have to go back to Suffolk County Planning Commission, even though it's, it's, we're just cleaning it up? It was something that E-codes, there was incongruity?
I think, uh, I mean, Yeah.
Well, that's good, maybe.
Yeah. So it just, the process is still the process, but I, I just, I, it's not a substantive change. There's nothing, it's already been vetted. It's just, now it's just fixing the, you know, oversights. So I can put something together, uh, to be, for you guys, uh, I'll work on today and get to you as soon as, well, the next meeting would be.
So we have a meeting on the 18th, which is a work session, and then the 20th is our, uh, night meeting.
Okay. So we can do a notice of public hearing for, I'll look at the dates and we'll figure out the dates.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I'm supportive as well.
Sounds good. One question, Charlie. So if, if someone currently submits an application for a building that's over 10,000 square feet, should that permit be processed or no?
No, the code is the code. The, the, the 10,000 thing was done, that's in the, that's, yeah. It's, we're going by the, uh, what was approved by the board. It's just cleaning the language in the code up. So that there's no weird things that come up. All right.
Thank you.
All right, no problem. See you later.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Charlie. Okay, so that are, that's the four topics we had on for today. So now we're up to liaison reports. Tom, you're up first.
Thank you. Uh, we met with the Amagansett Citizens Advisory Committee last night. We were honored to have the supervisor and councilperson Rogers there as well. Large part of discussion was around the proposed lighting project for Main Street. There was some back and forth between the different committee members and non-members as well as to, you know, the suitability of the proposed lighting fixtures and the need and, you know, the concerns as to has this, uh, safety engineering report been done? I did explain that this has followed very similar processes to other town projects. But just kind of want to keep it on people's radar. There is some difference in opinion. I did receive over the course of last night, probably about 20 emails from different, uh, community members. I would say largely in support of, you know, what the proposed plan was. But next steps of that are, um, we, we want to see some renderings from LKMA of what the bollard lighting, um, from, uh, Meeting House down to the train station might look like. And I will be doing some outreach personally to property owners in the affected area, just to ensure that they're all aware of what this proposal is. You know, discussion also took place around the, the structure and operations of the CAC generally. It's something that's come back and forth, um, with, with members and non-members. You know, I, I think it's something will continue to evolve, but as it stands, I, I think, you know, as we saw in that meeting yesterday, we have very good community feedback from them, um, but ensuring that, you know, they're heard is, is key. Next meeting will be December 8th. Um, one thing that did come up that, um, I was just going to follow up with for, for committee members is apparently there's a planning application in for a bubble of sport time. I don't know if any other committee members heard about that, but I'll be checking in on that as well.
Just go back to the lighting on?
Yes, of course.
So was there generalized support within the CAC members?
Yeah, I would say probably it was about an 80/20 split.
Yeah, I support that project, Tom. You know, I look, I look forward to seeing that thing keep moving.
They had a representative from the Amagansett Village Improvement Society. And I think what's, and a representative of the historical society and from what I took away is that there is some concern that this has, could have a major impact on the way, on the way the hamlet looks. And they're just concerned that they don't want too much lighting, you know, that they're looking for the balance, obviously, public safety. But there's just concern about changing the character of, of the hamlet's center.
Well, also bringing it back to, there used to be lighting on, on the street there in the hamlet.
It seems like folks were just concerned not about the, the lighting, but about just the number of fixtures. And that's why I thought, I think a renderings would really help.
Yeah, it's, it's that challenge between what is deemed public safety and then the right number of fixtures. And that's, it, it's a challenging one, um, honestly, because, you know, there, there is argument that the more effective downward lighting you have, the more visible crossings are. And we kind of, it did come up in that meeting and I know it's come from PD as well. There is a lot of crossing outside of the crosswalks there, especially on the Saturday night. So that visibility is important. Um, we, we have had two fatalities in this stretch itself. So I think there is definitively a need. But, you know, yeah, the changing of the character i- is a very challenging one. We saw it with Rowdy Hall in the same location, you know, that at that time it was deemed that that was not in line with the character of the hamlet. But now that seems to have kind of been ameliorated. So, you know, to me, this lies within public safety. And, you know, if I'm hearing those reports from residents, we're seeing the fatalities, we have the reports from PD. That's got to be one of our primary concerns here. And, and I think the character is, you know, it is quirky. Amagansett does have a kind of a, a very mixed range. You know, it does actually have these lighting fixtures already in the hamlet, in the adjacent Amagansett Square. So it wouldn't be too, too out of character, but it would not necessarily be the Cobra lights. One of the kind of the, the critical issues we have with the lighting in that area is right now we have the Cobra lightings, which are very high. The, the, the critical aspect of the character in that hamlet are the trees. That, that's the one piece of feedback we've had, and they inhibit the effectiveness of the existing Cobra lighting. So the proposal is to have 12, maybe 14 foot fixtures with downward lighting. You would require more of them, um, to get that photovoltaic coverage to kind of ensure that people can effectively be seen in the roadway. But it's something we'll continue to kind of, um, you know, he- hear concerns, address them as we can. But I think from, from my perspective, public safety is kind of the key driver behind this.
Yeah, Tom, I also just want to comment that the fixtures that are chosen are dark, dark sky compliant. As opposed to the village fixtures, which have lenses that shine the light up. They, they look historic, but they're not dark sky compliant. The fixtures that are selected are historic in nature, looking in nature. And also are dark sky compliant and won't have that light pollution. Well, the light pollution that, that, that people pointed out is happening in the village with the, with the lenses that they put in there. And also I just want to say, I think the thing with Rowdy was about the, uh, paint color and whether black was a historic paint color, which it certainly is. And that was only in, um, just the concern is, uh, keeping things historic in the historic district, uh, in nature. So, um, I, the fixtures are black and again, that is a known historic, uh, color. So, uh, yeah, I think just people, I think the renderings will really help.
Yeah, they, they are. And just in terms of the dark sky, Susan Harder, I know, who's been very vocal to the town on the dark side as complacency and, and is more strict than, than most, is, is supportive of what is being proposed to the town. I received an email from her last night regarding the project, so.
Right, just go back to, these type of lamps used to be there in the 30s. You know, down historical Main Street. So there was a need there. And Hurricane of 38, it toppled many of those trees there and probably toppled a lot of the infrastructure of those lamps at that time. You start going through some of the historical certain catalogs of dates, chronological order, why they're not there anymore. And it's also one of the largest right of ways in any of the hamlets with wise and true. So it does make it challenging to make it safe. So I completely agree with public safety is, is one of the top priorities on location. That's as an individual has been working in that area and also, uh, you know, working in that area for nearly 30 years, 25 years.
Well, I just know for myself, if I'm walking between the, what is it, Finney now pizza and the library? I take my phone out and use my flashlight on the sidewalk because it's so dark because of the tree canopy.
Yeah. And the other thing with the trees is that, you know, it did come up last night is the sidewalks there, you know, you want to be as easy as possible, but the root structure of the trees does, doesn't, you know, have an impact on, on the relief there. So it's like,
A lot of infrastructure. There's a huge drainage project that's on the north side there too. Sorry, excuse me, Tom, but yes, anyway.
While we're talking about, Tom, I'm supportive of this. I think that you're striking the right balance of moving forward a public safety proposal. We discussed it and I think when we discussed it at this board level, we said, please let us know if anybody has any concerns. And now they're being heard. So I think we should take them seriously, but, um, you know, I'm supportive of the project.
Thank you. IT, Open Gov, just an update here, just and some history too. So, you know, obviously we rolled out the initial Open Gov for the Building Department in March 2025. That architecture was built to the requirements that the chief building inspector at the time, you know, requested for operations there. We have had that turnover in the department and, you know, uh, with, with the new leadership there and feedback we've received from the public, we're looking to revise that architecture and how that system operates. You know, simplification of process, um, clearer explanation of what exactly permit requirements are. So it'll be a kind of a cheat sheet saying if you're applying for a DEC permit, this is exactly what you need to submit. That will be on the homepage. And then, you know, channeling and fast tracking of specific applications, um, which will go in line with some of the operational changes that are taking place in the Building Department, having inspectors specifically working on just pool permits. You know, so pool permits will be a fast track piece as well. So, um, in, in terms of timing, while we are with that, you know, we've set a goal for the IT department, February 25th, uh, sorry, sorry, February 14th, Valentine's Day. You know, ideally we get that done sooner. Um, they do have a lot on their plate. So, you know, as they're looking to do that, you know, one of the critical things is that things that are not necessarily as urgent for the IT department, I really want to push out because this for me is the number one priority for the IT department. And this is what I'm going to want to get done ASAP.
Right. And we have to understand, uh, Rich Normoyle, our principal building inspector, has been on the job six and a half weeks.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, so.
And he's doing a great job.
Doing a great job. And as, you know, the more time he gets there, you know, he comes back with, you know, new recommendations that, you know, we've been supportive of.
Yeah.
Yeah, some, some are very hypercritical, some of those recommendations, but in the end, it's trying, it's trying to balance the needs of that department and make sure it works for all the residents. And we will be taking criticism on that. But in the, in the end road, I think we're on a good track.
Yeah. Yeah, while ensuring public safety there as well and code compliance.
Yeah. Human services. Um, so obviously with, with kind of recent announcements with regards to, um, the, the senior center. You know, the existing senior center is likely to be in operation for a bit longer than potentially we'd initially envisioned. There are some capital projects, um, that I kind of want to circulate to my colleagues with that. You know, they, they, they range in scope. Some are safety related, um, some are kind of buildings related and some are just, you know, just for the overall, um, environment for the seniors in that center. So I'll, I'll circulate that to my fellow board members, um, after this meeting today. But it is somewhere that I think we might be wanting to look, put a little bit of money just to kind of maintain that building and, and improve operations there.
And Diane's got to get those requests in to Becky. I know it's, the deadline is, is looming for that. And we'll be discussing the 2026 capital plan early in January.
Yeah. Brooks Park, um, brought it up earlier here. I, I have circulated to my board members the, um, proposed license agreement from the Brooks Park Group. This is something they feel is really critical for them to have. You know, one of the challenges we said with the Osborne property as well is like maintenance of these buildings. And, you know, there is a specific emphasis that we want our operators and licensees, uh, of these facilities to take on as much of that maintenance as possible and raise money to do this. And in order for them to be able to do that, they do have to have a license in place. So, um, we do have a management plan for this property. It was improved in 2023 by the board. I think most of you, the majority of this board was on, on the board at that time. I, I think as Scott said, with, with the management plan for the Osborne property as well, it's like, it's important for these things to be somewhat vague. You know, we, we can't be too restrictive on what our expectations are, what people should do. Uh, and I think, look, Brooks Park is, it definitively has historical significance. And I think, look, Brooks Park is, it definitively has historical significance. I say that not just personally, but also from the National Trust. It's been identified. I, you know, I do despair somewhat of seeing this property continue to decline. There's pieces of architecture there that, once lost, will be gone forever. I mean, I'll say, beyond just the artistic structures, you also have the old Fisherman's Cottage from the Montauk Village. There are very few of those surviving across the town. So I do think there's an emphasis here that this is something I really, at some point, would like us to see, you know, getting support for. And I think the first stage for that is if we could get a license agreement to that group to allow them to kind of begin to raise money and garner support for operations there. Similarly, Marine Museum Restoration. I don't, you know, David was talking about the Lamb Building, which has incredible historical significance, the Marine Museum, too. It's a beautiful building. It has fallen to a little bit of disrepair and is in need of work. I've been working with Stacey Abrams, who's the operator there, to kind of identify what should be the next step in that. The key piece, I think, really is the basement, which right now is not usable. There's an asbestos issue we wish to get addressed. I've been working with Steve O'Brien to kind of try and get that on the radar. It's been incredibly challenging, truthfully. It's been over a year since we've been able to kind of not get anyone to be able to go out and address that. It's something I would like to kind of try and get done in the next twelve months. I think the critical point to that is if we can open up that floor for safe use, then we can begin to work on the other spaces because it gives us the opportunity to move stuff around. Moving on, East Hampton Youth Task Force. So I'd mentioned my colleagues before. One of the most successful organizations we have in this town is I Try For Girls. It's phenomenal in the way it helps young women develop, you know, confidence. I've seen with my own daughters and numerous young ladies from Montauk School when I was on the school board there, and I support it immensely, and I applaud how we fund and continue to support that organization. You know, one thing talking with Youth Task Force is that there is a kind of an absence of anything equivalent for young males in the town. I've been working with Youth Task Force and Josh Odom in Montauk to look into this. I'll be meeting this week with a group called The Butterfly Effect, who are looking to potentially work with the task force to create, you know, transformative spaces and organizations for young men, built around the four pillars of confidence building, healthy relationships development, critical thinking and self and community care. So I will share feedback from what their proposal is in the next liaison report. Arts Council Committee, just a reminder that on November twenty first, we'll be having a networking event at six PM in the Town Hall here. It's something I think is going to be great. We have four presenters based on the kind of the process of creating art. We have one person coming in who's an actress, another person who makes handcrafted guitars, just very interesting to hear about the diverse arts community we have out here. And that is everything on my liaison report.
Great, thank you, Tom. David?
Scalp season has opened in Town Waters. If you know where they are, let me know. You're welcome. We've gone over a couple on the Capitol Project ones. In downtown Montauk, there will be ADA sidewalk work happening right now, coming up. It's supposed to start yesterday then, too, but the weather probably delayed it then, too. So please be aware of that then, too. I want to let everyone know that as we do, as the water, as the temperatures start to drop, the town will be shutting off water at the head of the harbor and Gan Road. Slip holders will be made aware of that. And at Star Island and Gan Road, beginning next Monday, eleven seventeen, the pumpout stations, sorry, I apologize, starting eleven seventeen, the water will be shut off at the head of the harbor and to some of our slip holders. And the pumpout stations will remain open until the week of Thanksgiving, as usual. So that is upcoming then, too. Last week, we had, two weeks maybe, we had a meeting in the Montauk CAC. We talked about potential speed reduction on one of the streets of Montauk. I will forward that. That was on Old Westlake Drive. And then there was another large discussion on e-bikes and how can the township still work with the town, with the state in changing and making e-bike safer, specifically in some of the downtown areas also then, too, keeps ratcheting up. Lastly, Jason, you with me by chance? If you can put that live shot up?
Yes, right away.
Thank you. So everyone, I want to give you a live shot from one of our webcams. This is of the dredging at Montauk Harbor right now. The Lake Montauk, you'll see there's two dredges here. And if you're watching this, this is almost a notice to mariners. They pumped in nearly about twenty thousand cubic yards of sand on the beach, twenty four seven. The large barge, the oyster bay is on the right side there, swinging east, swinging right to left, east to west on the channel, working from the south side up. There is another barge platform with a large grapple crane on the top left. If you're a mariner, please be patient. Please contact the oyster bay on channel sixteen or sixty five. They will swing out of the way, but due to the size of the large dredge, it will take some time. Once you're past the southern dredge, it is it is recommended to stay tight to the northern dredge on there as you have a trellis metal sholing on the eastern side of this channel where they haven't dredged out there. We met with the officer in charge, Colin Snowville, from Coast Guard Station Montauk, and also the the master dredgeman, is that what his hat said?
Yes.
Keith. And they're working twenty four hours a day out there. They're going to be changing up some of their lighting on the barges also then, too. But it's a very active site, as you can see there, as the dredge material is being put onto the beach there through the sluice and settling out. One of the things I have noticed, you can see here, is you probably were seeing a beach that hasn't been in this location decades. I would be very interested in discussing, since this is a parking lot in the town of East Hampton, about parking, putting, naming time restrictions into this parking lot, maybe seasonal, May fifteenth to October fifteenth, maybe from nine AM to five PM, maybe two hours, to make sure that there is a flow of traffic in that location for businesses in that that area, but also allow for individuals to, for the enjoyment of the newfound beach in that location. So that is something maybe we can discuss, talk to members in the community and others, but that might be something we want to get in front of prior to the next season. Lastly, on this one, there is no sand fence going in on this project. And I would like to talk to the board about finding funding for for sand fencing as when the wind blows like it did yesterday, those wicked out of the west northwest. We can use that to keep the sand in place as we see here with some additional Christmas trees in this location along the lane. Might be helpful then, too. Anyway, I want to give everyone a live view of what's happening out there. It is another major project. I want to thank the supervisor, again, Kathy, for finding the money adequately to get this project moving in this county, you're not being punted on there then, too. Without your help and finding that supervisor, this project would not be at this stage at all. So thank you. And that's all I have.
Well, it was on full display during the dock run, you know, on Sunday, where they had a lot of folks down there raising money for the Montauk Nutrition Program.
Raising points, goodness.
And the Montauk Food Pantry. So it's been a lot of positive feedback on that project.
It's amazing how much beach is there now. Shocking to see that.
Even overnight, it keeps growing.
It's amazing. And that was Southwood Win funding that you.
That was Southwood, yes.
Win, win, win. Are you finished, Dave?
I am. And I, you want to do the ditch update?
I was going to ask you if you wanted to. So David, Dave, where the ditch planes update is that the, we'll have, we have a resolution on to accept easement from the main property owner. And the Comfort Station Lot has been closed, and there are right now staging vehicles. And as soon as we have some surveys completed this week, that project will begin. And my part of getting the DEC permit and the easement is moved on, and now David will be taking over the construction of the dune, as you can have just heard, and if you didn't know before that, his experience with constructing dunes started with FIMP. Twenty five years ago? And that project finally got to completion under his stewardship, and now, as you see, the dredge project. So David will be taking over the construction of the.
So operationally, right now, the Comfort Station Lot, the ditch planes is closed. They are staging equipment there. The DEC permit is in place, and the contractor has put now the notice to proceed to the, to them that they will start proceeding as of today or tomorrow, and they'll be dropping off a large amount of material into that Comfort Station Lot. The weather forecast actually looks pretty favorable for the next couple of weeks here then, too. Again, that ditch dune project would be going, that lot would be closed. And again, because the beach would be closed temporarily in the areas of work that are happening. So to, and we'll be putting this on socials also now, maybe to the disciplines associations or other groups in Montauk you can think of with us, Tom, is that there will be loud sounds happening down there, awkward loud sounds of large trucks banging the back of their things, going back and forth, but it's part of the process. So please reach out to myself, Kate, or Brian, Frank, and we can help you work, help answer those questions as needed.
And they start at first light, don't they?
They're going to be starting at first light and moving through thousands of yards of sand each day, yes.
I would just.
We have a short daylight schedule now, so we have to start at first light with the sun going down quite early.
I would just say to our surfing community, I love how much you guys appreciate getting out there and to good weather. Please be considerate and listen to any instructions and follow any safety guidelines. Don't try and cross over into areas where there is industrial processes taking place.
Agreed.
Good advice. So the Pecanic Estuary Committee met, the Pecanic Estuary Partnership, monthly meeting of all their committees met, and they're having some interesting work. The twenty twenty five Technical Advisory Committee approved a PEP seagrass monitoring system, and that will be some regional coordinating, and there will actually be a website that people can go and take a look at. And also, there's work at Tambor Creek studying, putting in and studying the nonreactive barrier. They have some data on that, some interesting facts about how actually far down contamination could go, and they'd like to extend that study. They need support with a water quality grant from the town, which they, I believe they will be applying for. But I think it would be timely to ask them to come in for a work session to talk about the eelgrass study that they're doing and also give the data on the Tambor Creek monitoring and permeable barrier that they put in. So I suggest that. The energy, not energy, the Sustainability Committee met, which was formerly the Energy Sustainability Committee. I've asked them to give us a recommendation on bamboo legislation that we had actually went to public hearing on quite some time ago, but it had moved forward after that. So they will be returning with some recommendations for that legislation. They also, as, as Rich Silver called in, he just wanted to, the committee wanted it noted because it wasn't stated in Eric's report, post hearing report on the ADU, that there were letters submitted to the file, comments for public hearing that were received by the town clerk and distributed to us in prior to the public hearing on the ADU, on the multiple use legislation. And they just wanted that to be noted because it wasn't noted in the public hearing, post hearing discussion, and also CCOM had also submitted comments. They also talked about the Just Transition Study. We had a presentation that will be coming to the Town Board on that study. That was a grant also that we received from NYSERDA. The Pecra Plant on Cove Hollow Road will be decommissioned by twenty thirty as part of the state's climate goals. And there is recommendations put in place for what we can do on that property. I would say the gist of the recommendation, the presentation will be, that is a great place for solar, already cleared, and there'll be some good opportunities to put a nice solar farm there to be tied into the grid. But that presentation from Natural Resources, from Megan, folks, will be forthcoming to the Town Board. And they, obviously, the committee was in support. And then also, the committee discussed also looking back at our own commitment for renewable energy by twenty thirty and how we can come up with recommendations as well on how we can advance those goals. We also spoke about the upcoming forum, which will be sometime in March, with the nonprofit organizations like Perfect Earth and Change Hampton and Rewild on helping us get out information on resources to have more sustainable landscaping. And they also will be bringing forth recommendations on that as well. And right now, Wayne Scott CAC met, of course, there was discussion about sixty six Main Street and the recommendations. They noted they were still waiting for the state to process the twenty five mile an hour request on Main Street. However, the speed limit on Wayne Scott Stone Road was lowered to twenty five miles an hour some time ago. They have some data on whether that actually did anything for slowing traffic down. They would like to come back in and show the data. They they plan on making individual meetings with board members to discuss that data and go back to discussion on potential stop signs further up on Old Stone Highway. And that is all I have. I'm sorry, Wayne Scott Stone. And that is all I have.
Great, Ian?
Yes, the Property Management Committee, which had a regularly scheduled meeting for tonight at four thirty, is canceled because of the calendar. We're meeting here, will still be an executive session during that time. And also, I think importantly, you know, that committee is all volunteers. They've worked very, very hard. I want to make sure that if we're discussing things, that it's pertinent, we're not, we're not wasting anybody's time. As we just brought this management plan for sixty six Main to this committee today for the whole public, you know, I thought it was appropriate to, for them to hear that out, and we'll get back to it next, next month. The Ag Advisory Committee was scheduled to meet tomorrow. That meeting is also canceled. And again, I think it's the same reasoning. That's a busy group of people. They've worked very, very hard coming up over the last many years with some agricultural site plan recommendations. And I think that their comments are final. We also have comments from the Planning Department. I've mentioned that a few times in my liaison reports, and I think that that's ripe for a full public discussion, a work session, hopefully.
We'll put it on for December second.
December second, great. So again, I think that they've worked very, very hard on that. The next step is a full board discussion so we can give them some guidance as to, you know, whether we like some of their suggestions. And at this point, just to prepare everybody, it's very broad. I would liken it to the sort of tree preservation type of conversation that we had. We're at the stage where a lot of thought has gone into it, but before we start crafting code sections and taking up a lot of department time, I want to make sure that we air it to the whole public and get an initial sense from the board as to what, if any, of those suggestions we want to move forward on. So again, Ag Advisor will be, you know, you know, next month, we'll start back up after that conversation we have as a board to see where they want to go from there. Spring CAC will meet next Tuesday at six thirty at Ashwag Hall. I don't know the agenda yet, but but all are welcome. And then I just wanted to comment on the Affordable Multiple Residence. We had a few, we had public comments. We talked last time about that, about some changes. So I believe that this is going to have to be reheard if we make those changes. The changes we talked about as a board were allowing the owner explicitly to live in one of the units. And the idea, I think, mirrors some of our ADU types of changes, that we don't want to, we don't want to penalize owners for, you know, developing affordable housing. And so it was understood that our code would allow the owner to live in one of the units if they take advantage of that proposed code, but we just wanted to make it explicit because the code doesn't say that. The other change that that came out of public comments, I think of that, the last hearing, the concern is that nobody's going to do this. And the other change that I'm, would propose to be incorporated would be to not require multiple units in each of the buildings. The idea being if somebody has a small house on a one acre lot and wants to develop affordable multiple residence, they could live in their house and then develop that in the back as opposed to having to rework the entire site. You know, hindsight's twenty twenty. I wish I would have thought about that earlier, but the goal here, again, is to be as restrictive as necessary to make sure the use is appropriate, but not overly restrictive because we want people to take advantage. So there's, those are two relatively minor changes, but I do think it'll require a new hearing. We will welcome all comments in the process. I don't know, Kathy, if you think we need another work session or if we can just notice that.
We can talk about that offline, yeah.
Great. That's all I have.
Okay. So I had some folks reach out to me about the work and paving being done on Route one fourteen. So I sent an email to our contact, to PSCNG. His response was that restoration work is ongoing. We're currently shooting to have paving done on one fourteen by the end of the month. The Department of Transportation is really pushing for that. It may bleed into December, but the goal is to have the entire project complete with the cable in service by the end of twenty twenty five, and they're on schedule. I guess it was two weeks ago, we had the East Hampton Sett Harbor CAC meeting, and we talked a lot about North Main Street. They had some concerns in the October meeting about lighting issues, and we had some bulbs changed out so that there was, the lighting was on the parked cars, not on the sidewalk. We've kind of corrected that. They also had requested East Hampton Town Police Department kind of like a foot patrol during.
during the hours of 5:00 p.m. and, and 7:00 p.m., when the area experiences, you know, a lot of volume with people going into this grocery store and the market there and e-bikes and double parking because folks were running in to get, pick up food. So they have been doing that, and it was very well received, and the officers are, you know, engaging in conversations with community members, and apparently it's from the folks that spend a lot of time there. It's, it's been a huge success. They also, there was a accident in those crosswalk a few months ago. Those crosswalks have been painted so that they are, can be easily seen. And we're also, the town attorney's office and Lieutenant Alversa are working on the language for clear permanent signage that, so that folks on e-bikes know that they have to dismount and that they can't ride their e-bike on the sidewalk. Or any bike. So that's something that Jake and Lieutenant Alversa are working on. Next up, we, we launched our Toys for Tots. The, the town is working, we're, this is something we started last year. We're working with our CSCA, our Department Heads Association, the PBA and the Superior Officers Association. The box is now here in the main lobby of Town Hall, and, you know, we encourage folks to, to participate and donate to brighten the faces of our kids on Christmas. I guess a week and a half ago, we had our free shredding event here at Town Hall, and does anybody want to guess how many pounds of paper got shredded?
21,000.
21,000?
I, I just, I went low last time.
Yeah, well.
That's pretty high.
That's pretty high. So it, it was success, but it wasn't a 21,000 pound of paper success. We had 2.3 tons, 4,600 pounds of paper were shredded. That's up from 4,000 pounds the, our first year. So, you know, I, I.
We're gonna get the 21,000 pounds soon.
Okay, we'll work on that, David. I will say, I mean, I, I came down here on that Saturday, and, you know, folks were really appreciative, cars were lined up. The gentleman that ran the shredding, the two gentlemen were, were incredibly helpful to community members, so it, it really went off without a hitch. The other thing I wanted to do, last night I had the privilege of attending the, a veterans' dinner at Amagansett Golf Club. I was invited by Sergeant Pat Royal, who is the commandant for VFW 550, and it was, part of the evening was to honor Martin Marty Sylvester. The East Hampton Press did a cover story, story on, on Marty, and I, I just, if you will indulge me, I'd like to, to read the proclamation that I gave to him last night because he has lived an extraordinary life. So whereas Martin Marty Sylvester, a longtime resident of Springs in New York City and a dedicated member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 550 in East Hampton, celebrated his 100th birthday on April 4th, 2025. And whereas born in Brooklyn to a Jewish American family, Marty registered for the draft on his 18th birthday and soon after entered the United States Army, serving honorably as an infantryman until the end of World War II in 1945. And whereas Private Sylvester landed on Utah Beach in France one day after D-Day and went on to fight in some of the most intense battles of the war, including the Battle of the Bulge. And whereas during his service, Marty was seriously wounded by a German sniper and captured three separate times by enemy forces, yet each time escaped captivity through extraordinary courage and determination. And whereas following his final escape, he was sheltered and cared for by a German family until liberation by advancing American troops, exemplifying both the resilience of human kindness and the bonds of shared humanity even in wartime. And whereas, whereas as a Jewish American soldier who fought against Nazi tyranny, Marty Sylvester's courage carried profound and deeply personal significance. Facing a regime bent on annihilating his people, he stood in defiance of hatred and oppression, embodying the triumph of courage, faith, and the unbreakable human spirit. And whereas for his distinguished and valiant service, Marty Sylvester was awarded the Bronze Star Medal, the Purple Heart Medal, the Prisoner of War Medal, the Legion of Honor Medal, and the Distinguished Service Medal from New York State. And whereas Marty's life stands as a testament to bravery, perseverance, and the enduring values of freedom and democracy that his generation fought to defend, now therefore be proclaimed that the town of East Hampton honors and commends Martin Marty Sylvester for his extraordinary heroism and devotion to our nation, extends its heartfelt gratitude for his service, and joins with his family, friends, and fellow veterans in celebrating his 100th birthday and remarkable life. Pretty extraordinary. And he has quite the sense of humor, I have to add. Lastly, I, I want to read a statement on the recent ICE activity, and this is from the entire East Hampton Town Board. "We condemn the actions taken by masked federal agents in Hampton Bays and West Hampton last week. For our neighbors and friends to be taken without explanation, leaving families onshore where their loved ones were and why creates deep fear and uncertainty in our community. No family should have to live in fear, afraid to go to work, take their children to school, see a doctor, or gather in community to worship. This is not what justice in America should look like. The Trump administration's policies that separate families and sow fear are inhumane and erode the very principles our nation stands for. Fairness, due process, and human decency are the promises this country was built upon." And I must say, and Marty fought for. "Here in East Hampton, we stand with our immigrant neighbors. We are a town built on care, connection, and compassion. The people who live and work here, no matter where they were born, are part of the fabric of this community. When even one family feels unsafe, we all lose something. To our immigrant neighbors, we see you, we value you, and we stand with you. You are not alone." And that is my liaison report for today. And do I have a motion to go into?
Just before the motion, could I just ask that we, that we also look to continue to donate to our food pantries to make up for the loss of funding? There are still, you know, food insecurity is still huge in our town, and the pantries are in need, so please find a way to donate to our food pantries.
And I forgot, we have resolutions. Tom, you're up first.
We do, and just, just quickly before we jump into that, I just want a quick plug. This Saturday, there is a fundraiser taking place for Robbie Bellness, who's a local person who suffered a very unfortunate medical incident. So if you can make that, please do, it will be at the Talk House. Sorry. Clubhouse, thank you. Additionally, just a reminder, as the clocks went back the other day, please change the batteries in your smoke alarm. It's just a good reminder every six months to do that when the clocks change. Onto resolutions. Resolution 2020251478, this is to amend resolution 20251447. Be it resolved, resolution 1447 for a budget modification for the town trustees, is hereby amended as follows. To decrease budget lines for computer software, office equipment, computer equipment in the amount of $1,000, $1,020, and $1,500 respectively, and increase budget line for furniture and fixtures in the amount of $3,250.
Second.
All in favor?
I have the pleasure of offering resolution 20251479. This is the appointing full-time laborer in the Highway Department, Joseph Nesbid. Hourly rate $25.56, grade 17, starting step for 40-hour work week, effective November 17th, 2025.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
1480 is amend resolution 20251298. This is the Montauk Playhouse Change Order. Resolution 20251298 is hereby amended to revise change order to number five and replace the attachment.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
1481 is extend contract EH2023106, public internet, Wi-Fi, and public visible cameras to Saunders Broadcasting Corporation, whereas the town wishes to extend the agreement with Saunders Broadcasting for additional two years as allowed in the initial resolution.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I have resolution 1482, which is to amend resolution 1395. And this is whereas the Amagansett School has requested a revised date for their event. Resolve that the following special event permit is hereby approved. This is for Amagansett Union Free School District for the Turkey Trot, starting on Mayacona Lane to Bluff Road to Atlantic Avenue, ending back to Amagansett School. This will take place on November 25th, 2025, from 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1483 is approval of reimbursement of Montauk Chamber of Commerce cleanup deposit for Fall Fest 2025. Resolve that the town clerk is authorized to issue a refund check to Montauk Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1484 is to accept storm damage easement in connection to the Ditch Plains Dune Restoration Project, whereas the grantor is the owner of certain parcels of land situated at 10 and 12 DeForest Road, Montauk, in the town of East Hampton. Whereas the town is undertaking a project for storm damage reduction, which includes but is not limited to dune construction and restoration. Whereas the town has determined that the dune restoration project is essential to protect the shoreline from further degradation and essential to protect public infrastructure, public beaches, and natural resources. Whereas the grantor is desirous of granting the town a perpetual storm damage reduction easement over and across a portion of the grantor's property, which is described in Schedule A. Resolve that the town board accepts the grant of the storm damage easements from grantor as more specifically described in the storm damage easement agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
1485 is to accept a pedestrian access easement in connection with the Ditch Plains Dune Construction Project. And again, this, the grantor is the owner of a certain parcel of land at 10 and 12 DeForest Road. Whereas said access easement will allow for pedestrian access and access by public emergency vehicles over the easement area. Resolve that the town board hereby accepts the grant of the access easement from the grantor, which is described in pedestrian easement access agreement, and to allow for public access and authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1486, this is a payout upon resignation for Erica Chimbow in the amount of $908.70.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1487 is to adopt a local law overriding the tax levy limit. We had the public hearing on Thursday, November 6th, and there were no public comments.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I have resolution 1488, this is the promotion and provisional appointment to building inspector for Joseph Birdy. Resolve that Joseph Birdy is hereby appointed on a provisional basis to the full-time position of building inspector in the building department at an annual salary of $73,319.19 for a 40-hour work week, effective November 17th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1489, this is the authorized transfer of funds for affordable housing for the acquisition of full interest in property at 82 Bow Orismen Road by Community Housing Fund Project Plan. This will transfer $399,000 to be paid to the CM Fund from the CH Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1490, this is a resolution authorized in the town of East Hampton through its Office of Community Housing, Housing and Community Development to apply to New York State Homes and Community Renewal for participation and funding under the Move In New York Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1491 is to accept the resignation of Town Personnel Officer Kathleen Rude, effective December 29th, 2025.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
1492 is to approve the temporary appointment of Personnel Assistant. The town board appoints Emily Fisher on a temporary basis for six months to the position of Personnel Assistant for a 40-hour work week, effective November 13th, 2025, through May 13th, 2026, at a prorated annual salary of $90,048.87 for fiscal year 2025.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to go into exec session?
Yes, I'd like to go, make a motion to go into executive session for CPF, Personnel, Real Estate, Contracts, Litigation, and Advice of Counsel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, LTV.
Thank you, and you are off.